With a roll call, John is excused this evening, so I'm stepping in his chair. So Rebecca is here. Phil?
Here.
Neil is absent. Mike Ahern?
Here.
Mark Sturgeon is absent. Susan?
Here.
Zach Tyrell is not here. Mike Bouchard?
Present.
And Peter Julia?
Present.
Okay, so we in two, three, four. So since we're missing a couple of regular members this evening, Mike Bouchard and Peter, you're welcome to be, well, you are asked to be voting members this evening.
Thank you, Chair.
Acknowledged.
All right, so we will move on to minutes from our December 7th, 2023 meeting. I noticed a couple things in, we're missing a couple, as far as I could tell, a couple seconds on some of the motions in amendment, the ones I caught were amendment four, moving it to public hearing. And then also in amendment seven. I don't remember who made those motions. I'm certain, or the seconds, but I'm certain someone did, so.
I will say on amendment four, I believe that was Sue who seconded that one.
Okay.
That was my motion. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the one on off-street parking. What was the other, seven or six?
Yeah, seven. Joseph, you don't happen to have those notes handy, do you?
I don't have them handy. We could look back on the tapes, though.
Okay.
And could double-check the.
The tape is probably more accurate than my recollection on seven.
It felt like I seconded and made a lot of motions that evening, but I couldn't tell you whether or not. I think at that point I'd given up, or I'd given up some steam.
Passed your time to make seconds at that point.
I am okay if we move to approve these minutes with the, going back into the, if Joseph, you or somebody could do that, if that, if we think that's acceptable.
I'll second that motion.
I didn't make a motion.
All right, I'll move that we approve the minutes with the retroactive addition of seconds noted on amendments four and seven.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
Less so? Okay, great. Moving on in the agenda here. Joseph, any communications received by the board?
Yeah, so I do have one item that, you know, I suppose I would categorize as a communication. So we had spoken some at a few of our previous meetings about Wildflower Lane, which is the portion of the Mountain View Farms Cluster subdivision off from Fairgrounds Road that has, was not previously developed. It's that sort of middle cul-de-sac. And we discussed their sort of phasing agreement that they had entered into when they were originally approved. So they did proceed with installing that infrastructure for Wildflower Lane. So just before, basically, you know, November 20th, they started some paving, or they finished the paving of Wildflower Lane. They had prior to that time done all the, you know, the grading and installing the drainage infrastructure, as well as the water and sewer lines, which had been previously approved. That installation was okayed by the Water and Sewer District. The town engineer, Mike McNally, commented that the grading looked good prior to the pavement going down. And his colleague Brent from his firm was there to observe the pavement installation as well. And so as, you know, that's been, that's also been completed. So Wildflower Lane down to that, you know, to that pavement drainage and water and sewer utilities has been installed up there.
Has anybody approached the Select Board about the town adopting that road at all?
So there was a request filed with the Select Board by the developer for Crescent Street to be accepted. But Wildflower Lane was not included with that, with that request. It was just for Crescent Street.
Thank you.
Is that it, Joseph, for communications?
Oh, and there was another communication that I received this afternoon from Inabutter on the Mountain Village Charter School application. If you prefer, I can hold that until the, until the application.
Yeah, let's save it for that. Thank you. All right, moving on. We have three public hearings this evening, or two public hearings. First is a boundary line adjustment on lot 235-001 and 234-020. It's an application to adjust a common boundary. Owned by Greenacre Woodlands and Dave, sorry, James and Deborah Horan. 6.28 acres would be exchanged from parcel 235-001 to 234-020, resulting in acreages of 23.94 and 1,211.22. All right, so is there a representative for the applicant or the applicant here? If you would like to come up to the podium and give a brief presentation on this application and enough information for the board to rule on whether to accept it as complete, that would be great.
Sure. I'm Tom Hahn with Forco, representing, well, both parties, but primarily Greenacre Woodlands. Fairly simple boundary line adjustment, tax map 235 lot one, over 1,200 acres. That's the Plymouth Mountain Track, basically, that has the Sutherland Trail on it. There have been two prior surveys on that property over time. There was a conservation easement was done on the property, or the bulk of the property, in the early 1990s. So there was a survey done on the northern portion of it at that time. And then there was a overlapping title claims on the southern portion of it that was resolved through a boundary line agreement, the area that's accessed off of Hunt Road. And so that has a survey on it as well. And those two surveys together comprise, combined comprise the boundary surveys for the whole, the whole tract. The north access on the Green Acres parcel is Scenic View Drive, private road. And as I mentioned, the south access is over a right-of-way off of Hunt Road, which is class six. So the 235 lot one doesn't have any road frontage and probably hasn't for a couple hundred years. The, let's see. The portion that's subject to the boundary line adjustment here in the northeast corner of that tax map parcel, there's 6.28 acres, which were excluded from the conservation easement when it was done in the early 90s. And so this proposal is to add those 6.28 acres to the abutting parcel that the Harans own, which is tax map 234 lot 20, which is also accessed by private Scenic View Drive. And that lot was created in a 1983 subdivision.
Now I see you're requesting several waivers in this application. Could you summarize those for us, please?
Yep. So the, one waiver is, is not to show the property lines of the entire parcel on this particular plan. And where the Green Acres parcel is over 1,200 acres, there's two existing surveys on it. And I believe I submitted a copy of the, copies of those with the application. And I have copies with me here tonight as well. Where so, where the only thing that's being changed is the 6.28, 6.28 acres at the northeast corner of the property. So we're asking, you know, not to have to show all the boundaries of that large parcel again. The other waiver is showing existing wells and septic systems. The Haran property is already developed. They have a house and garage and well and septic on it already. So there's no changes there. There are lot sizes actually increasing, and by way of this boundary line adjustment, there's no boundaries that are moving closer to their existing infrastructure. Another waiver is not showing soil types. That the Green Acres parcel, the bulk of the north access is under conservation easement and can't be developed anyway. And the Haran's property, again, already has an existing well and septic system on it. And lastly, showing five-foot topographic contours. Again, the Green Acres property is large. The bulk of it is under conservation easement and can't be developed. And, and again, the Haran's property is already developed. So we didn't see the, the need to show contours there.
All right, who holds the conservation easement?
The Town of Plymouth.
Okay. And, I mean, obviously, you're here at the Town of Plymouth, but we are representing the town. But just to make sure that, with the conservation easement, we got to make sure that the easement holder also gets notified. So I'm assuming the Town of Plymouth got notified beyond this, so.
Yes.
I believe it's the Conservation Commission that manages that. Other questions, or any questions from the board regarding the completeness of this application? Or any questions about the waivers, discussion about the waivers? These are all pretty standard for a boundary line adjustment, especially with the acreages that are this size.
I make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the application as complete, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, application is now complete. Any questions from the board before I open this up to a public hearing? Okay, it is 6:45, and I welcome anyone from the public to come up to the microphone here and ask any questions. A reminder that questions need to be directed to the chair. Please step up if you have any questions or comments about this application. If there is anybody in our Zoom audience, please go ahead and unmute yourself and ask any questions or speak any comments about this application. Okay, seeing no comments, either in our home or in-person audience, I will close the public hearing at 6:46. Bring it back to the board. Just looking through our staff report here. Reminder that we do need to do some findings of fact. There is a note here that says, consider a condition of approval to state or include a plan note that says any future subdivision proposing to use Scenic View Drive as road frontage for a new lot would require Scenic View Drive to meet the road standards in the Plymouth subdivision regulations as they may be amended.
And I will note that the revised plan provided by the applicant did include a note to that effect.
Great.
Which was the plan dated, what's the date on it? The 18th of December.
All right, so not even needed as a condition. Are we ready to talk about findings of fact?
I think so. I would offer the finding of fact that the amended property, both amended parcels would meet the dimensional requirements of the agricultural zone for both frontage and area.
I will add that all abutters have been notified. It's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other findings of fact from the board?
I can't think of any.
Pretty straightforward. Any further discussion? Or perhaps a, a motion?
I'll move that we approve the boundary line adjustment. And I don't think we need any conditions, do we? Address the one recommendation.
Just the Mylar copy of the final plan for recording.
Yeah.
Yeah. Move that we approve the boundary line adjustment as proposed with the condition that we receive a Mylar copy suitable for recording.
Second.
With the recording fees.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Application is approved.
Sure, that would be fine. If you have. Sure, yeah, that would be great.
I don't know where my. All right, next up, we have a site plan review for an educational facility on Tenney Mountain Highway. This is an application for site plan review from Mountain Village Charter School to develop an educational facility to serve up to 120 students, grades one through eight, including three classroom buildings totaling 14,951 square feet and associated site improvements, including a 39 space parking area and a driveway on parcel 213-031. Do we have a representative from Mountain Village Charter School? So same thing as the last application, want to hear a brief presentation of your project and any waivers that are being requested. And a number of us have been here through some of the various iterations of this, but I don't know if all of us have been here, so.
My name's Delaney Carrier. I am the Mountain Village Charter School Board of Trustees Vice Chair and lead contact for the board on this project. I also have with me Frank McLean, who is the immediate past Chair of the Board. I am rather new to this project where Frank has been driving this for several years now. So I'm really going to ask him to, um, to speak on our behalf.
Been a minute since we've seen our last extension there during COVID, right? So it's kind of the same thing. I'll just bring everybody up to speed. We're developing, actually, we even brought more information the last time that we applied, right? You can see that we have our three buildings, but the intent is for us to move our current campus in Plymouth that's over at the Ninth State Complex onto a beautiful, absolutely perfect parcel for us. Nothing is being built in flood zone and it pretty much is exactly the same as we proposed last time, with the exception that we had that contingency that we needed to bring building plans for the, for the past approval. So now you can see that we spent some time with an architect that has been working in the school development. He did Russell's most recent addition out in Rumney. He's worked on Squam Lake Science Center, fantastic, he's noticed in there. And he's probably credited at some point in there with the designs, Peter Stewart and Associates. So, yeah, we really, we spent a bunch of money to get to this point so that we could start to appease our funding source at the bank to, that's what happened last time. I think you guys all remember our USDA money didn't work out during COVID and whatnot. So we decided to go the old fashioned route and borrow some money to build the building that's within our means to be able to support with our public funding. Three big garages, really, if you look at them. I mean, we really have to be thoughtful on how we're spending that money. And, um, yeah, that's what I keep telling all of the bidders. It's three big garages, trusses and straight walls.
So we do have the drainage and we've got the, let's see. Sorry, we deal with a lot of paper.
Yeah.
So flipping through a lot of this information. Questions from the board about the completeness of this application?
Why aren't the engineered plans sealed?
I can't speak to that. I don't work for Horizons. I would, I would put that to them to figure out what that question even means. There was a conflict.
Sure.
It's, um, I mean, I would, off my recollection, say that there were, should be almost exactly the same as what was approved last time.
I mean, I think the final plan will need to be stamped, sealed by a professional engineer, I believe, so. I think the question for the board is with the, we've gotten a little bit more information about the lighting, I think, than we had in the initial packet. We've gotten a stormwater report. I think we don't have information about the sign. The question for the board is, do we have enough to begin to discuss design and plan things? Do we have enough? Is the information complete?
I'd like to say that we do not have plans for signs at this point, so we would like to request a waiver on, on sign designs.
And I do have a piece of paper, if you need a piece of paper. Requesting the waiver.
For the records of the board, that would be helpful. Just a copy would be fine, or we can circulate it.
So we have a written waiver for the sign?
Yes.
And it sounds like there's still work being done with the water and sewer to figure out.
Yeah, so there is a sewer design that is active that they've been working with. And Jason has given approval, but we were holding off on the app. I don't mean, you know what I'm saying, like, he's looked at it, reviewed it. It meets his expectations for what we would be doing. It's $10,000 to apply for those permits and we're waiting, we're adding all of this together to present to the bank for the funding, rather than spend the 10 grand on permitting.
Totally understandable. And it sounds like you'll probably need DOT to get involved in some of that too, because, yeah.
I'm listening, sorry. The DOT, there shouldn't be anything other than perpendicular drilling underneath. We've already got a quote for that drilling from a company that does it all the time under state right of ways. The, the piping is on until that point where there's a manhole on the northern side of Tenney Mountain, sewer's on the southern side up there of Tenney. The, it's all on private property up to that point where that manhole is. So we go in on private property and then it's just that right of way that the directional drilling would take place underneath the highway. Again, we held off on that because that's not cheap. And then water's coming in the form of a well.
Questions about the completeness? I think in particular, the one thing we have a waiver request is for a sign. I'm okay with that as long as we put a, if, once we get to thinking about approval, making sure that that sign's out of the DOT right of way and conforms to all of our design and dimensional requirements.
I agree. I will, I will note that there is a proposed sign shown on the plan and it says C note five, but note five has been co-opted for other purposes. So I don't think there, it doesn't appear that there are any notes regarding the location of the sign, but it is depicted, it appears to be depicted within the right of way, which will probably not be okay with DOT.
Yeah, and we would address that for sure, it's going to be.
But, I mean, with, with all that clearing, you've got lots of space where you could put it out of the right of way. And, and that will still require a sign permit through the town, so I feel okay with that.
Landscape plan, we've got a note here that what's on the plan is what's proposed, but there's also maybe some more extensive landscaping that might be part of this.
Yeah, anything that would be done would not be impactful to anything at the front of the property. It's going to be hand sown seeds for the interim with just naturally occurring weeds that will show up eventually. Down the road, again, as funding presents itself, we do have a landscape architect that's using this as her thesis. It's pretty amazing, but it's something that rather than present it here and say, hey, here's a bunch of amazingness, for now, it's going to be those raspberry bushes that sprout up.
Volunteers, Frank.
Volunteers. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, application and its completeness.
I make a motion that we accept the application as complete, noting the waiver for the sign.
Thanks, Mike.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor to approve or accept the application as complete, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right. Let's talk more specifics. We will be opening this up for a public hearing at some point, but I just want to make sure if there's any questions from the board that we want to talk about right now. My concerns are parking lot lighting, pedestrian circulation would be my, my primary concerns. Knowing that there's no interior sidewalks or, or anything like that. Other comments from the board?
I'll tell the applicant and the board why I voted against it. Within a few minutes here, I don't believe your engineering is complete. And I just don't feel the board should accept a site plan of this magnitude on relatively steep terrain with poor soils when the engineering isn't complete. I'll define complete, there's a retaining wall, there's no design, there's a sanitary lift station that just basically shows a pretty picture. Those are two very serious elements that should be well thought out and completely engineered. This is a school. One of your large buildings is, is a very small scale, but I would say within 20 feet of that retaining wall on a slope that you're filling.
Is, do I, I don't know the proper procedure.
There's nothing for you to say. I'm just trying to explain to you why I, I was the only one who voted against it, that's all.
Um, you know, I think that there is likely more engineering work that needs to get done. And I, I think we will want, I mean, in my opinion, send this to the, our town engineer. And so we'd need to discuss, you know, entering into a escrow account or opening, is that, I'm phrasing this wrong, but making sure that.
Construction agreement?
Construction, I think there's a development agreement.
No, design review.
Design review, thank you. To send it to our town engineer to make sure we're catching the aspects of the plan that will need some more work. I think it's hard for us to get that ball rolling unless we have an application that is, is considered a complete with the, the timeline starting to tick, so. And Peter, I would encourage you to speak up before we make the vote so we can all hear your thoughts on that, so.
So nobody's asked me if we have plans?
No, I think that, I think there's some.
We do.
I recognize your engineer is not here. And so I don't expect, I don't think anyone here expects you to be able to, you know, talk about slopes and stormwater and retaining walls and things like that. If you want to, you're welcome to, but I think, but I think.
We have HEB Engineering has stamped plans that is for the full concrete and full study of the engineering for that. There is retaining walls proposed, but they're not in a spot where that is going to be impactful. There's a, a large apron of concrete that comes out beyond the footprint of the school for a walkway that will be engineered with, I think, I forget what the name of those blocks are, but they're the big, you know, engineered blocks that lay in place to, you see them pretty much at all, every Costco that's built into the side of a mountain. I think they have them over here at Walmart. So HEB has worked on that. We had Charlie Buckley, who has, I mean, years in the field, has designed the full septic system, including the lift and everything. That's all out getting quoted now for pricing. But those weren't, I didn't see that as, when I was working with Joseph, I didn't see that those were needed to be included for, yeah, for that type of stuff. I'm happy to provide those at any time. All those engineering plans that, again, we've already paid for in anticipation.
Great, so it sounds like that information does exist. I think having that as part of the application package would be helpful, especially since, you know, a project of this size, we typically send to our, our, our town engineer. So having that information supplied to him for review, assuming that's what the board would want, which I think would be pretty consistent with what we've done in the past. So any plans for pedestrian safety from parking lot to building, aside from what we see on the plans here?
Yeah, I mean, pretty easily, we could add crushed stone walkways around the fronts of where the cars will be parking. That would be, you know, like, cost next to nothing for us to add. As far as lighting, that's a whole nother story, right? Like, all the way down there, we are not, we're daylight hours of operation. You know, the, the lighting up top seems to be efficient enough for our building inspecting, you know, like, for safety around the building. I don't know if anybody's been to our current site and seen what was approved, when we built up there. And I know it's times have changed, but if anybody saw where we are, you know, and that's all been approved by the fire department and it's all safe and sound for operating. But, I mean, I guess it comes down to why we've designed it this way is for costs. We, we don't get our funding like a traditional school, right? We don't, it's not based off of the taxpayers and the municipalities that the school's in. It's a set number from the state and that's what we're working backwards from. Our occupancy that we can afford is directing the design.
Right. And whether you're putting a school or, you know, a store or restaurant here, we're, we're asking the same questions that we would ask of any applicant. Interior circulation, lighting, safety, things like that are all things that are regularly part of the, this conversation, so.
Of course.
Questions from the board?
How far down does water go?
580? Oh, what, I, let's clarify my question, for the well, is that what you're asking?
Town water.
Oh, town water. It stops, it stops $800,000 short of where our building is. So.
It's a very accurate measurement.
And that was priced two years ago.
Yeah.
We've worked with Jason to try that. It's on that side. And then we worked with all of our abutters to try to get it onto private property so it wouldn't have to be a 12-inch main, because that's the only way they would allow us to extend it. And then we would own those pipes in portuity from where it is to the school. We would own those pipes and be responsible. So we did work with our. own those pipes and be responsible. So we did work with our butters. We called and messaged, and there was one person that was willing to work with us.
So you just put the septic under Route 3 where you would tie in?
Yes, yeah. So our butter to the east, Arlen Barn, Arlen Farms. He, we've entered, we've discussed this and we've got a gentleman's handshake agreement, whatever we want to call it. We've done the cost analysis to add his building to the septic for the rights of us to be able to go across his property with our outlets. So there would be two separate, two separate pumping stations, one for his property, one for us. We're working with Jason to develop and engineered, like, to the state specs require two inches or something per foot to get underneath the right-of-way, and that puts us at a weird elevation issue on the northern side, but we think we can overcome that with some different booster pumps or something. Again, I can't speak to the actual specifics on that one, because they're, that's still in the works, and we haven't filed for that application yet. Again, that $10,000.
I would think, yeah, the, the water and sewer approval, and I would think maybe the, some sort of easement, official easement for the sewer pipe across the private property would be a, you know, when we get to thinking about approval, that would be something that we'd want to make sure is, is on there, because things change if we have to start thinking about septic on, on the property.
Yeah, so the septic was gonna be on the building that's all the way to the east, but encroachment on the property line and in order to have, you know, a school that kids want to go to and it's not just jammed up on top of each other, it, the septic system would have had to have been to the right. That was already engineered, we already paid for that. So we did eat that money, and we did that only after we talked with Jason about, like, hey, can we, is this doable? And it definitely seems like it is. And again, we're just drawing up the draft for that easement with the lawyer is, again, it's money that we don't want to put before the cart before the horse, yeah.
So Rebecca, I'm wondering with, with the 25th coming on pretty quick and Mike Fignalli's schedule, how soon could we have them back to get Mike's comments on this?
I mean, it's usually something that, when we have this discussion on a Thursday night, it's usually something, Joseph, you're able to jump into the next day, as long as we can talk about a escrow.
Yeah, I'm not, I haven't confirmed with him his, his scheduling over the next few weeks, but he's, he's typically able to get that done in advance of the next meeting, given that the escrow can be executed, you know, shortly thereafter, shortly after the meeting. So, that being said, I haven't specifically asked him for his availability over the holidays. I, I don't know, but I, he's typically able to get it done by the next meeting.
So typically, what, what will happen on a lot of projects of this size, we often will continue the hearing, send the application materials and then any of the other design stuff you have to our engineer, who will come back with a list of things that he'd like to see changed, that we can address at the next public hearing on the third, Thursday of January. So that's typically, typically how that, that works, so. Peter.
So does the town still only have one review engineer?
KV Partners, correct, is the firm that, that we have for plan review, as well as construction inspection.
And that process is to confirm that the money that we're spent is, they're been doing it accurately? Is that-
That everything is, to, actually, Peter, you might be able to-
Sure.
Peter knows this inside out.
Yeah, we, yes. It's supposed to be a compliance review. So the engineer looks at the plans, the site plan regulations for the municipality, and, and would make a note like, for example, as Rebecca has said, you know, a lighting plan has not been provided. Or may make a note, a landscape plan hasn't been provided. Or may make a note, a review comment, you know, the plans are unsealed. May make a note, we see a sanitary sewer lift station without calculations. May make a note that we indicate, I think I saw the number like 37 or 30-something parking spaces, but the applicant hasn't indicated hours of operation, employee count, number of students. And maybe, you know, when you add up the square foot of the, the building, there's, there's a number of ways to come up with parking. But anyway, those are just some examples of typical review comments, compliance and completeness review.
And typically, what happens is we get, well, we get a letter from the engineer, it gets sent to the applicant, and usually, it's just a matter of a couple tweaks here and there on the plan, is generally, for something that's already, you know, been to an engineer and things like that. But just a few things that just make sure that what we're getting adheres to what our regulations get, in a way that most of us don't have the trained or educated eye to be able to do.
I was gonna say, what, we're, none of us, with the exception of Peter, has done this, and it-
Sure.
So I would say usually this list you should get before the meeting, so that you can address all the points one by one, and then gives us a chance to say yes or no, or to approve it or not.
At the initial?
At the next meeting, I would say.
At the next public hearing.
At the next public hearing, if, and we would continue it till the next meeting, because it is much more involved than the first one that was-
Sure.
Prior to me even being on the board, so.
So that would be January 18th, I think, is when the next, right?
I believe you are correct. Yes, January 18.
Any questions about, about that?
No, I understand it.
All right, good, all right.
Do you guys understand it? You guys have any questions?
I would make a motion that we can-
We need to open, let's open a public hearing first.
We haven't done that yet.
No, we haven't done that yet. It is 7:16, and I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anybody here in the audience this evening that would like to speak of any nature of this project or ask questions? Okay, seeing no comments in the in-person audience, how about our at-home audience? Not sure which camera to look into to speak to you folks, but, but if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to speak about this application, now is the time.
And if I might comment as well, seeing that nobody on Zoom has unmuted themselves. I did receive a correspondence from a budding property owner. This would be the owner of the property on the other side of Arlen Farm, so parcel number 21334, who wanted to make sure, to clarify that she did not approve of or allow, or want to see allowed any water or sewer utilities crossing her property. She said that she had, you know, she was concerned to stress to the board that she did not want to give an easement to this project to allow water and sewer to be extended to it through her property or, or any other utilities, and, and asked that I share that with the board and, and, you know, the, the public to, to make sure that her, her concerns were known. It appears on this plan, and, and maybe the applicant can, can confirm, you know, but it, it seems as though there is no proposed utilities crossing any property other than, you know, that Arlen Farm property. But she did specifically request that I, that I relay that comment and her concern, because she felt that it would be detrimental to her property to have that.
Any other, any other comments from the public before I, I'm not gonna close the public hearing?
Make a motion that we continue this to January 18th, giving the applicant plenty of time to address any concerns or clarifications that the town engineer would like.
Do we need to ask if the applicant is willing to enter into an escrow agreement to facilitate design review?
Yeah, so, yeah, a piece of that is, the, the engineering review is at the applicant's cost. So you can work with Joseph to set up an escrow account to pay for that.
How much is that?
So I have a, yeah, I have a quest, I have a request for a quote out to the town's engineer. I don't have that number back yet, but once we get that back, I would share that with the applicant. And I would say the last one, you know, they, was about $1,200, was the, was the previous plan review escrow. Obviously, everyone might be a little bit different, but to give you a ballpark, once, he would give us an itemized task order for it, though, with a, with a escrow estimate.
I think that's low. Don't, don't write a check yet.
I know, that's, yeah.
Okay. It's about five acres of development, and the, and you've got a lot going on, and the reviewer should not only look at the engineering plans as a site plan, but also needs to review the stormwater report in addition to. And part of that also is just to take a peek at whatever applicable permits are necessary. So in this case, you already know you've got to get the Plymouth Village Water and Sewer for your sewer connection. You know you need a DOT drive access, and you will also need a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services alteration terrain permit.
It's pretty close there on that AOT, right?
That's AOT, correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I think it's pretty close on the disturbed, right?
Oh, no, you're crushing it.
No, they, they did a calculation where it's, it's like a couple hundred square feet under.
Yeah, it's below the threshold.
The threshold is one acre.
It was 100,000 square feet is what the engineer horizons had used.
Perhaps they've changed the regulations. I'm pretty sure it's one acre, not 100,000.
For an AOT.
But, but they can-
We'll find out from the-
Yep.
Town's engineer.
That's correct, that's correct.
$5,000.
That's a good placeholder.
That's where I figured it would be.
That's more realistic, yeah.
No ski program. No.
No textbooks.
You know, we're, we're doing everything we can to usher this along, you know, we just, we have regulations that we have to adhere to, and this is, you know, what we do for every applicant.
I try to find the humor where we can find it.
Yeah, yeah, yep. So, all right, we have a motion on the table to continue the hearing until January 18th. We still need a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? We will see you next month. Have a good holiday, and we'll, well, I say we, but what I mean is Joseph, will do everything he can to, to get the, the review as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's over here. Go on to those, those are going to the zoning board next week. They're here. See you, guys.
Thank you.
That's okay. In my process of trying to get the plans to line up, I blew a couple papers off the table. I'm sorry.
I am, I, yeah, the paper is, paper's all over the place right now for me. Okay.
There's only one left, so.
That's okay.
Well, we are breezing right through this. All right, so we now have a waiver request before us. This is for the Last Chair Brewery on Route 25. So there's a request from the applicant for amendment to the conditional site plan approval granted on the 20th of July of this year for the development of substantial expansion of the existing brewery and restaurant on parcel 214-006. The application wants to see, is seeking approval to change the building design and scale back from a two-story addition to a single-story addition. The applicant seeks a waiver of the requirement to hold a full public hearing on an amendment to the previously approved plan. All right, so we have in our, and this is mostly, is there, I mean, I don't see anybody here in person.
I think the applicant is on Zoom.
Okay.
I am. If you guys can hear me.
We can hear you. Is there anything that can, we'd be welcome to, or we would welcome any comments or any more information you can give us about how you're changing the sum?
Yes, it's a basic story of my dreams and aspirations are deeper than our pockets. The construction costs seem to be soaring a little more than we had planned on. So we made a crucial decision to shrink the size of the building. It was about a 7,000-square-foot building now, it'll be just a little over 4,000 square feet, going from two floors to one floor. Nothing on the site plan changes, nothing with the stormwater management changes, nothing with the septic changes. Literally, we are taking away the second floor and actually lowering the roof line as well. So I think it, to me, I'm committing myself that it looks better and conforms, but it's something that we have to do at this point to keep expanding, but not outgrow our, our expenses at this time.
So to be clear, the footprint isn't changing?
Yep.
It's just the, the height of the building?
Yep, the height and the square foot. So we're literally taking out, like I said, almost 3,000 square feet and removing the second floor. So now it'll be all one story. There'll be no second floor whatsoever. So that's why I was hoping, hoping to get a waiver instead of public review, since we had really no, well, we had positive comments, but no public comments on the first one. It was approved as a bigger entity, and keeping the same square footage, the same site plan, literally, everything else is staying the same, with the exception of the roof line and the second floor.
Parking staying the same?
Yep, everything's staying the same. So hopefully, we'll have less people, so hopefully that'll even be better to park.
I make a motion that we accept the waiver.
Are there, can we, well, we now have a motion. Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Is there a second for the motion? We can discuss it a little further?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board about, I, I'm, I think this is pretty straightforward. I think there's pretty much no substantial change to this, that we're not expanding anything, we're not changing how, really not changing the impervious surfaces. I don't see any impacts to a butters.
I don't see any negative impacts to butters. And, and, you know, my, my thinking is if, if the applicant were to undertake phased construction of, of the original plan and decide that he wasn't gonna build the whole thing, that, you know, I don't see that as being very different, so.
Sort of thinking-
I don't, I don't really have any objections.
Logistically, though, would we need different plans recorded or on file here? Because I think, just to make sure that if there was, I mean, this goes in, this gets constructed 10 years from now, they want to, somebody wants to put a second floor on there, would that be an expansion of use, or would that be a phased development of an existing site plan?
I think there is, I think the RSA's have some, I think there's a timeline where, you know, if the, once it's built and there's a CO issue, I think there would have to be a reapplication. But my, my request would be that we simply ask for an as-built when the project is complete and that becomes the, the update to the site plan.
And there won't, this will be an open floor plan, and on some of the pages that Joseph has, you'll see, we're keeping with the same style that we have today, high ceilings, things of those lines. So a second floor isn't really feasible, but I can see, maybe the next owner will do it, but I don't see it happening in my lifetime.
We're just trying to cover our bases here, so that we are, you know, our job is to facilitate conversations between develop, you know, budding property owners essentially, so, okay.
Has the applicant submitted revised architectural plans?
They have, and those should be hopefully in the packet. If not, it's the plans up here on the screen, and I can-
Don't those still show, doesn't that still show two stories?
I think this was the original.
That is actually the original approved plan set there.
Okay.
And then apologies if that did not make it into the printed packet. It's on the memo.
We had it in the, in the email packet that had both of them.
Thank you for that clarification.
So this is the- So this is the, this is what is now being proposed as the change in front of us.
Oh, I don't think I'd see that.
May I ask the applicant, basically the roof line, roof height, what has it changed from and to?
It changed from thirty-four and a half feet to I think now we, our highest pitch is twenty-two feet. So we're basically keeping in line to what we have, the last roof line maximized what we could for regulations of the town. This roof line is keeping with what we have currently because there's no reason to go any higher.
Yep.
This is the comparison. That's what they proposed before, two stories.
Oh, thank you. Oh, right, 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 right. Yeah. No, just personally, I, I think this is a much better fit for the, the area. That two-story would have, probably might have seen it from my house.
So the, the original application would, or the original approval would have had the requirement to provide as-bills at the end anyway, right?
I don't believe that was placed as a condition of approval on the original.
So would we want to, on this waiver, I mean, we're not really approving anything. We're just saying you don't have to come before us for a site plan review. So I think we would just ask the applicant in good faith to provide those as-bills.
That's no problem.
Thank you.
And I would advise, you know, if you want to approve the waiver and then just make some findings of fact before voting to approve the, the change. Just because if it is a, since there would be a written notice of it, that findings of fact would also be, you know.
We can do that after we vote as well. That's fine. Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of waiving the requirement to go back to site plan review for this amended building plan, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, findings of fact.
Footprint hasn't changed.
Septic parking, nothing else. That's all the same. It'll fit in.
No public comment for or against?
True.
We didn't technically open a public hearing, but.
There's nobody here to speak.
There's nobody here.
Oh, no correspondence. There was nobody here last time.
Actually, is there, Joseph, who's online other than the applicant?
It's just the applicant and two town halls. So there's no other.
I will say that there's nobody in the audience and there's nobody online other than the applicant.
Just want to be clear that we, yeah, we did not notice this. So. But yes.
But yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it would be worthy of notice anyway. I mean, that's the whole point of the application is that, that's what we're voting on.
I believe there was no opposition during the initial hearing that we had three or four months ago.
I don't even remember. How long ago was this?
July twenty.
Was it really?
Yeah, there was no opposition at that point.
Oh, I know. Time flies. Holy cow. Thank you.
Okay, is that sufficient? We got a few findings of fact?
Yeah, we got the four facts.
And, and the request for the as-built as a, as part of the decision?
Sure, we can list that as a finding of fact.
Yeah, I guess the finding of fact is that the applicant had indicated he would be willing to provide a, an as-built when the project was complete, if that's, if that's acceptable.
All right. Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good luck.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, any informational and pre-application reviews this evening?
None that I've heard. Nobody's reached out to request one.
Other business. We have some updates on the adoption of our new flood plane, or FEMA flood insurance rate max, map?
Yes.
Maps by the select board.
Yeah, we do. We have some updates on that. There are two pieces that weren't in last week's mailing but are out here. They were alluded to in that, but not, you know, the actual paper wasn't there. So the select board did officially adopt the new flood maps and flood insurance study for Grafton County. So these have been being developed for, for quite some time. The public comment period ended several months ago. And then after that time, we received, the town received a letter of final determination from FEMA. So saying that after the public comment period on the maps closed, those maps would be going into effect on their effective date of February eighth, twenty twenty-four. So what they have tasked all towns with doing, as per RSA six seven four fifty-seven, is that select boards were, were tasked with passing resolutions to formally adopt these new flood maps. But kind of interestingly, you, you have to adopt them at least three weeks prior to their effective date. So you'd be out of compliance if you were actually adopting the flood maps on February eighth, twenty twenty-four. You need to adopt them in advance. So just to note that these are now the official, upon that resolution, that, that's in your packet from the select board, these new maps are now the official flood maps that are in effect in Plymouth and are, you know, so for purposes of floodplain development. These are, these are now what, what folks would be looking at. And, you know, to help people get a sense of what might have changed, if they're interested, there's a public open house meeting being hosted by FEMA here at Town Hall on January tenth. And there's a, a stack of flyers. And this is going to be open to everyone in Grafton County, but representatives from FEMA will be present to show community members or, or anyone interested, our planning board members, you know, what areas of the map have changed, if there's been any impact on their property. You know, how those new maps will impact our community. And again, that's on the January tenth here at Town Hall. That, it'll be also, you know, the flyer will be going out in the town newsletter. But, you know, it is, it does have a somewhat of an impact on the planning board because, you know, the, the floodplain development regulations are now, now apply to these, these maps. And there are paper copies, if anybody wanted to see downstairs. There's a link on here that shows you how to access the online flood maps. And, you know, there's some great online viewers that let you, you know, do some dynamic things with the, the flood maps. But the, the paper flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps and the panels are all available downstairs to the public now. So if anybody comes in or if anybody, you know, is proposing a, you know, building in, in the floodplain, that those would be the maps that are now effective.
Of particular interest considering what happened this week. So.
Absolutely.
Out of nowhere. All right. Any other business from members of the board or from you, Joseph?
Nothing else from my end.
Looks like we probably have no other public comments. Would anyone, who, who would like to do the honors this evening?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All right. Yeah, it's non-debatable. It's true. All right. All those in favor of adjourning on this, the darkest night?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
The longest, the shortest day today?
The darkest night, I guess it's the, yeah, the short, longest night, shortest day. Happy solstice.
Solstice is at ten twenty-seven tonight, so we still got a couple hours until.
And thank goodness, we won't be sitting at that table for that.